I'm going to call the work session of the Eugene 4J School Board to order. It is April 25th and it's four o'clock. And
What was it you did last time?
It's April 25th at four o'clock. And today's work session is going to be hearing from our finalists for the school board appointments. And we have eight interviews scheduled tonight. And our first interview is already on the screen. Welcome, Kirti.
Hi, good evening.
Are far away.
I am. I'm in the Philippines. I was gonna say good morning, but it's the wrong time zone.
What time zone? What time is it?
It's 7:00 AM. It's not so bad. I feel like I should apologize for not being there in person and also for being dressed up for a Eugene interview. I'm not trying too hard. I just have meetings right after this.
Great. So you got the questions sent to you for the interview. Seven questions. And we have 25 minutes set aside. We won't ping you because we're starting a few minutes late. We'll give you your full 25 minutes. And so with seven, you can pace yourself. How does that sound? Would you like me to give you any time check at 15 minutes?
No, but I would. Yeah, I think I can. I'm trying to not go into my essay site where I did with the submission. So I think I'll be okay, hopefully.
Okay, then I am going to ask you the first question. And that is what are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes? Whether in academics or in their social and emotional lives? How would you measure success?
Yes, I was thinking about this question all last night, and I think one of the main things is that we tend to look at social emotional learning separate from academics, and I don't believe that that should be the case at all. Children shut down if they're not in a socially emotionally healthy place. Their brains aren't open to learning. So in order to achieve academic outcomes, I think we need to be looking at them in concert with each other. I think in order to be able to do that, we should be able to look at what kinds of supports, like I think I'd mentioned in my submission application about the kind of increased trauma and stressors I think are going to be showing up increasingly in the classroom over the next several years. I don't think the world's getting that much better on there unfortunately. So I think we need to do as much as we can to make sure they're emotionally supported, they're socially supported, that there measures in place to for screening and interventions early on before it gets to a point of requiring additional mechanisms, all those. But also in terms of supporting academic outcomes and social emotional learning, we can't discount the teachers in this. I think the teachers have to be equally well supported, both socially, emotionally, like asking them to come in and to be everything to a student, interpret the world for them while they're dealing with their own stressors and social emotional issues in a classroom that could be dealing with all sorts of individualized behaviors. I think that we need to be protecting and supporting our teachers. And I feel like it can go in our direction to actually like help us achieve those academic outcomes. Like how many of us didn't have an emotional connection to learning, like a frustration from a math problem or not being able to go in and learn something as easily in your second or learned language? Or on the flip side, joy or a sense of accomplishment from achieving a skill set you didn't know you could have before. So I think measuring is what you'd ask for on there and I'm not a measurement expert. But I would be looking at involvement for students, increased engagement, whether that looks like in terms of participation in class activities and other kinds of extracurricular activities. Looking from a beginning to year end, things on just every interval, students are going to have their own mechanism for engagement. Looking at teachers' mental health and emotional health on that too, whether that comes in through an evaluation process, taking into account what kinds of supports that we can give them. And then also coming back to like families. In 20 years of doing this, when you ask your parent, like what you want your child to be in 20 years, they're all like, we want them to be confident or creative or analytic or critical thinker, like nobody in 20 years said, I want them to learn my multiplication tables or like recite all the articles of the Constitution, you know? So it's this is the kind of thing that I think we need to be framing, that if we bring those into the classroom with the right supports, they can then contribute back into helping the health of the community. So that's my can, hopefully not so can't answer.
Hi, Kirti. I have a second question for you tonight. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you? And what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
Community engagement to me, it looks like being able to work in service projects and being exposed to community members and stakeholders that I wouldn't normally have interactions with and being able to be able to support them. I think I mentioned I grew up in South Carolina. I've been in service activities my entire life. Whether it's things like Habitat for Humanity or Meals on Wheels or we've been the last few years been working with Guilherme County to just be able to either donate or help stock on there on those pieces. I've certainly been present in the girls' school systems, my children's school systems or schools specifically to help engage there. And it's exposed them and me to much larger subsections of the community than I would have otherwise. And I think as a board, our role is to be supportive of many of these stakeholders. It can't be one or the other. We can't be factions for this piece and other. Our goal is to be supportive of the community's goals and outcomes. So in order to do that, I think we should also be like role models for the community. I think we should be either sponsoring or working in service events together as a board. I think that boards are in favor of achieving critical thinking skills and debate and dialogue. And we live in a pluralistic democratic society disagreement and compromise is the hallmark of how we all come together. But I think we should be modeling some of those. And I think it's fair that if boards can go in, if we could find a way to have dialogue, that's not necessarily at a board meeting, have bring in people from different sides of a particular argument and be able to moderate and have real discussions around that and show the community that we're able to also listen to them and take into account their considerations.
Great, thank you. Our third question is that people in groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside of the board's role or authority. How would you handle those kind of requests?
Yeah, to me, that's very straightforward. It's transparency and redirection. I mean, I've worked in DC with actual government members and it was like basically just a swarm of lobbyists everywhere, actual lobbyists and immature lobbyists on there. No, I'm very much on setting boundaries. This is the purview of the board. These are not the purviews of board. If you feel strongly about a particular issue or thing on there, I would find who makes decisions on those and find ways to be an activist on those channels. Sorry, short answer on that one.
What role do you think staff? What role do you think staff members voice should play in 4G policies and practices?
I think we should be listening and taking into account all 4G staff. Hundred percent the teachers, but hundred percent staff. Staff are the ones who are keeping all school systems running, everyone from like the bus drivers to school secretaries, to the counselors. They often have more face-to-face time with many of other community members with our children. They're also asked to come into an entire public education system and support the functioning and the governance of the schools and the institutions that we've got in place and have to work in a working environment that is dealing also with the stressors, both from the teachers, from the students, from policies that are put in place. And we want to make sure that staff are listened to as well and have a say in what is happening at the board level. And I do believe that it is our role and responsibility to be supportive of all of those coggs on that system, because if we can't be supportive of all those, then like, I mean, I hate talking in cliches, but we always talk about the house and the pillars. If one of those pillars is gone, you're gonna be being in a unstable foundation moving forward. So I do believe that I don't know what that looks like quite yet. But I do believe that voices from 4G staff across the system need to be heard. It's very strange, like just with the silence. I hope I'm not just dead silent here.
Are writing and waiting no turn.
No worries.
Hi. Okay, I have question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federally federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
So I'll take those one at a time. So my understanding of communities living in poverty, especially in the States are the stressors that we talked about earlier are often compounded multiple times in communities experiencing poverty. So students who are sometimes either experiencing more developmental challenges or sometimes placed in disabilities, higher absenteeism, higher dropout rates, a fair amount of health issues that come in as supportive of that too. All of that compounds then the well beings, both of like what we can teach the students, what they're likely to come out of it, and also their prospects for the future, what they consider their role is as a member of our community and what their like growth trajectory is for coming out of a system of poverty that we've put into place. So in terms of working in these environments, yeah, again, born and raised in Charleston, South Carolina, went through middle school, which was hundred percent rural poverty to a certain extent in there. It was one of the Blue Ribbon Schools on there. My mother's been a social worker with a WIC for 30 years. We have been teaching and tutoring in low income schools for as long as I can remember. I'm still, because I was involved in Eugene and I apologize for that, still working as a mentor for inner city schools programs in DC as a career mentor on those with some friends of mine who are looking at connecting women of color and students of color to people have gone and done things with their career. I have lived in Latin America for several years in Ecuador. I spent those times down there actually working in communities that were low income communities and rural communities volunteering and after school programming largely on arts and creative education on there to for parents who are working in service oriented professions and the children didn't have any place to go after school. So we were helping to actually set up community programs in these organizations, still exists. It's called the Biblioteca Interactiva and Banus. Please check it out. Internationally, I would say the most impoverished communities that I have worked in have been a hundred percent in India, just largely due to the large populations and the levels of income disparities and working with systems in India that are having to cover public education for a swath of a community that has some of the most affluent people in the world with some of the people who have the least things living basically next door to each other. So in terms of experience on living and working there, I would say I have several work experience that have basically been about drawing policy or developing education programming, but does have to take into account that there are students that are coming from a very different support and in level that it's just so broad and challenging, but I also don't believe that those conditions take place in isolation. So I think we can set school board policy. I think we can do the work around those things too. But understanding that our work also means working with other areas of governance on poverty alleviation, looking at what food security looks like, what does health look like? What can we do to actually support the health and development of an impoverished community to set them up to be able to learn? And I apologize. I think you're gonna have to repeat the last end of that question.
Not a problem. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
Yeah, and so I think that, I mean, we're all working in education here. So I think one of the biggest things for me has been always the debate on outputs versus outcomes, right? You can spend our money building 50, 500 schools on there, but if the kids don't have access and they're not, and they're actually learning, what have you achieved in terms of things? So working with our communities, working with as a board, I think when we're studying policy and direction, we have to be able to look at what are the outcomes you're looking at achieving? In terms of helping on that, again, I've, like I said, I've been working in international development education for years. And part of that is understanding what are those goals and objectives. It's talking to the communities, triaging what those things are. I'm, I'll give you an example just from yesterday. I was with a school district here in Manila that, or you know, there's a administrator who wants to bring all the newest things into the classroom. I want to alleviate poverty by bringing in all the greatest things, the greatest curriculum on this and the greatest assessments on this. And we want to put all the greatest equipment in a classroom. And after talking to him, he said, well, what is it that you want to do? Well, we want to affect and develop a sustainable model for early childhood. Well, it may not look as sexy, but your ability to deliver on early childhood is going to be your teacher's capacity and deliver on those principles and the approaches for that. And talking about like, these may be professional development programs and no, it may not be look as like, hey, it's a pretty, you've got a lovely model classroom, but you're achieving outcomes that will be long-term and sustainable and will last longer than us, longer than whoever's administration. So I firmly believe that in education development, like we're a piece of a puzzle. And I think our biggest role is to make sure that we're building on what's come before, adding, creating as much as we can to make sure that what we're doing is lasting on there. So whether if that's putting in policies in place that drive funding for a longer period of time or programs in place that are in capacity building that are actually driving people's ability to do things as opposed to limited to just on a particular one programmatic setting or over after two years. I think it's our it's our duty to be able to do that. That was a very long answer to that question. So I hope I answered this in all of the questions in that one.
Thank you. You covered it.
Okay.
Six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district and what would you bring to this work?
I think it's, this ties back into the previous question actually, and it's the same, I think, to a certain extent for me, lens of looking at what those outcome priorities are. I think the board's done amazing work in terms of like the like the trans bathrooms on there. And even I love the idea of the free lunch programs. I think one of the best things we can do is, like I said, support, just take off the stress of having students who don't have those basic needs and being able to provide that. I think that's a foundation of what we as a public education system should be doing. I think more programs such as that and looking at where are the communities? Where do we want to take them from the beginning of a year to an end of year? Where do we want them in five years to be? Looking at an overall picture of what are the program streams that can help support those things? It may not look the same for every community. It's not going to look the same for each of those outcomes, obviously. So that's the whole, I think, basic idea of having to draft policy and to support policy and make decisions. And there is, I think, going to be a lot of compromise. There always there always is on there. But I do also think with focusing on inequities, like we're by by focusing on an equity lens, you're by just definition, looking at the impoverished communities, many of them are affecting the communities of color. Migrant communities that are coming in. Native communities that are there. I think the board's also supported the native access to education on there, having tutoring programs in place, having other, some place, having transportation, other access to those. I think those are all pieces that are part of a larger puzzle to move us from this part. And I understand this position is only for 13 months. I'm also very cognizant of like what kinds of things that are accomplishable in a short governance period. But understanding that these are where we can define our priorities. I am extremely passionate about diversity and inclusion, but I do believe that needs to be real. I think representation doesn't matter, but I do believe that like coming from a training background and whatnot, we do need to be able to like look at inequities and how not just that we have students that are responsive to this, but like, are we actually changing attitudes? Are we actually doing things? Are we actually creating policy to set those in place? And it's not just a checklist of we brought in new people. I think the board's actually been great. I think the Oregon Equity Lens that has been put out has been fantastic on covering each of those pieces. And I think 4G has actually been, from my review, has actually been much better at many areas. And I think it's just the nature of our community. We bring a lot of people who are coming from different areas. We are dealing with a large swath of subsections of socioeconomic states. For you, for Eugene, having come from South Carolina and Atlanta and DC. Hang on there. And I think that we need to continue in that, in that line. And this isn't a tangible outcome to these things. This is basically a lens I think I can bring to the goal setting, really. Piece of looking at equity, diversity, inclusion, and not in just a space of, like I said, equity in terms of like, oh, racial, ethnic, religious, these kinds of inequities, looking at equity across the board, like where are the inequities? Where are the cultural inequities? Where parents aren't, you know, able to be able to be supports for their own children because they are not able to be or they haven't been integrated into the system or know what this is like, how, where are the gaps in our system to be able to get the students the supports that they need in order to succeed in the system? It's a very broad-based answer, but I care about this immensely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have your last question.
Make it hurt.
No, it's all good. You have time. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role? Oh, I didn't time my mic, so I'm gonna start over. Sorry. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
Yeah, I was, this is when I was again nailing on, on there. And when I do believe that student voices need to be heard at the board level and they need to be heard in a real way. And I say this, having come from honors programs in spite of my math and science grades. But very much on, we don't just want the students who are in here to be the next step up on governance. We want people who can speak for the students who can't. I think that would maybe look like an advisory council from students, making sure that we're covering the same kind of diverse strata that we're wanting to have engagement with. I am not opposed to having board positions on there. I know it's controversial topic, but I think that's something that is worth discussing. I think whatever happens with student engagement, it needs to again be representative of the diversity of students in, in Eugene. That is something it's here. So I think in terms of my particular involvement in that, I am all about being involved in your, like my mother was one of those who is like in the school system substituting from beginning of forever and just in there talking and explaining to kids that Indian people also come from a country in Asia in there. And it was just like showing how we can actually just be involved as parents, as community members, working in there to getting to know the students that I was in school with. And so when she was talking to them and even having a lens from like working as a media specials or working in these things or whatever, being able to talk to the people who are actually talking to the students, ourselves being able to go into schools and talk to students. How can we bring those back in a, in a way that is organized, coordinated? I think there's different ways that we can look at that from work positions to advisory councils to having surveys and evaluations on there. So I think there's multiple mechanisms. I do believe that student voices need to be heard.
Thank you. You did great. You got through all seven questions. So and it's 4:29 here.
Awesome. Yeah, I have a, heading to the Department of Education right after this. So this was ironically not my most stressful meeting today.
Well, I'm glad and really appreciate your time and hearing from you. And I think you know that Wednesday night we will be discussing and voting on the new board members. So I don't know if you're gonna still be out of town, but you can tune in. That meeting is at six, I believe.
I will do so. And I do, um, I was serious when I was saying last time, like regardless of what happens with this, I would like to be able to commit to working in programmatic settings in Eugene. It's, it's, it's taken me some time due to health issues and just the kids and things on those. But I feel like wherever your decision goes, I'm fine. Like this is a commitment that I would love to make regardless of the board position. So thank you for your time and considering me. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Kirti, and have a good day. Good luck at your next meeting.
Yeah, take care, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
We can hear you. We can see you.
All right, great.
Welcome. So we are ready to start our interview. We have 25 minutes set aside for every interview. I think you got the questions. I hope you got to see them, right?
Yeah, I did. Thanks.
So there's seven of them. And so you could pace yourself. I don't know if you want anyone to help you with time or, you know, give you a time check or anything.
Probably not. Yeah, I think probably not.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then I'm going to ask you your first question.
Okay.
What are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experiences and outcomes? Whether in academics or in the social and emotional lives, in their social emotional lives? How would you measure success?
I guess I'd start with, I think we need to continue to concentrate on the social and emotional, which was a good decision by our district and many other districts who promptly realized, especially at COVID, when COVID took over, that this was the most appropriate thing to do. It's very difficult to concentrate on academics if kids aren't in a good place socially or emotionally or emotionally or anytime, let alone, let alone, let alone COVID time. We also know kids have lost a lot of instructional time. That's, that's a worry of everybody. I understand that. So we need to maximize that time and minimize activities that don't help students and their teachers in, in, in teaching them. I hear this over and over from practitioners, people that work in schools. In my remarks as a, as a member of the budget committee during meetings, I've used my time to encourage us to free up counselors and other specialists, mental health specialists especially, to concentrate on, on maintaining social, emotional well-being. Hopefully using classified folks for 504 meeting management, which is a huge focus for for middle school, at the middle school level and for scheduling at the high school level. They've been asking for this for, for a long time, and I think that we're starting to listen to them and hear what they're saying. And I'm really glad to see this. I think that could go a long way in helping kids. We should also be fostering a relational approach, I believe, in teaching between educators and students. And this is where cooperative, cooperative learning activities can be extremely effective. Allowing teachers to get kids to create or cultivate what they're interested in and rediscover the joy of learning, which is a phrase I've used before in my remarks. But it's just so important. This type of approach, I think, can promote This type of approach, I think, can promote stability in classrooms and, and in their lives. As a teacher, I learned that this approach helps build self-esteem and, but I also think it builds esprit de corps in the classroom and in the school. To answer your question about how do we measure the success? Actually, this is something that, that one of the things I was focusing on with my, one of my student teachers this morning at Roosevelt. I think attendance, work completion, participation, creativity, those are all good indicators of student success, along with multiple assessment modes. I think we really need to be careful about focusing on a singular academic indicator, especially at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I have your next question.
Okay.
I have your last question. I turned on my mic. That's why I'm repeating myself.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you? And what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
About a year ago, when I was, when, well, actually a little bit more than a year ago, when I was in the campaign to become a board member. I met Alex Reyna, who, who's now on the equity team. I'm very pleased to hear. He's a really bright guy, but I've, I've had two or three meetings with him, one in person, which was, which was great. But he knows quite a bit about this and, and what I've learned from him. And also in my, in my experience has been communities, all the communities, all the communities that form 4J, the larger community have different schedules. They use different social media platforms. They use different ways to gather, whether it be in churches, whether it be in at sports events, whatever it may be, they're all slightly different. And, and I think we need to recognize that. I think he, he preaches that to the entities that he works with. One of which I believe is the city of Eugene. But board meetings can be frightening for people who've never been there and not familiar with what, what we do in, in a district. They, they seem foreign to, to people when they come and it's difficult to sit back and wait for them to come and expect them to come and, and get the, the input that we need. I, I really think that we need to, to go to our communities that make up 4J. And, and copy or extend what we were doing, I think, two years ago, when we were trying to engage the public to find out what, what was the best use of SIA funds. We can't treat that as an, as a one-off. I think we've learned lots of lessons, but we have to employ what we've learned in, in something, we should make that our system we can rely on. We have really talented equity administrators in Larry and Misael. And we need to continue to use their expertise. But we also have building based employees. I, I've mentioned Fernando Lopez, who's worked at Kelly Middle School. I worked with the Ganas program. And I was, I think in the last four days, there have been a couple announcements about Jim Garcia, who's, who's based at LCC. How he's becoming more and more involved in giving talks at the different schools in 4J. I think this is terrific. He does a great job. And I was really pleased that actually one of the people an alumna from Ghana, Alma Guillen, was one of the people who now works with 4G or 44G with wraparound services. And she got some of that started. So I think there's a perfect example of how we can engage with people and we can see the results of, of that engagement. With regard to role, I think board members being present at some of the, obviously board members can't be present at all meetings, but being present for, for some of it can, it can help. It, it shows our communities that we're serious and I think one of the advantage, I think, advantages that I think I would have is that I am able to speak Spanish and that would help me with one particularly important community that has had difficulty engaging with, with 4J. And I'd also like to include student board members who could play a part in that as well. I, I guess one of your questions later on is, is about that very thing. So I guess we, I can wait till then.
Thanks. Our third question is that people and groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside the board's, the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
To me, board members need to ask questions, seek clarification, get information from all stakeholders and people with expertise outside of 4J. To forward the board's goals, which they, they form by themselves with, with all this information. It's, it's, it's a cycle. Board members are not employees who put into effect board goals. That's up to the superintendent and the rest of the staff. And I'd make that very clear to people who don't understand how this all works. And I understand that it's a little difficult to understand. As an advocate for teachers and as a teacher leader, I've, I've often had to say no when this type of thing comes up. We continually sought input in, in the teachers' union. And people would give us their input, but so often we couldn't solve the problems in the way people wanted, given these boundaries. And there, there are good reasons for these boundaries. Direct intervention doesn't always work. I wish I had a magic wand. But no. Occasionally a member would question the boards or the superintendent's or an administrator's role in something. And sometimes my answer wasn't satisfying to the member and it sounds satisfying to me either, but that's, that's the way, that's the reason we have guardrails. This also came up. I had to explain boundaries to parents and students, this is probably more so. There are reasons for separation of responsibilities and purview. And these aren't things that can be easily circumvented. But I've always pressed for better board communication with staff with regard to sufficient time at meetings to give input. That's very, you know, it, it used to be a long time ago, five minutes and it went down to two minutes and it's been at different parts of, or different stages during meetings. It's gone back to three minutes or so I'm happy about. So it's always been something that we've talked about. I there used to be regular meetings or coffees with, with staff groups. I, that was pretty regular for, for years. It became spotty to nonexistent even before COVID. So I'd like to see that be reinstated. But I, I just think listening to unfiltered input is just essential.
Okay, what role do you think staff members' voices should play in 4J policies and practices?
It's a good transition. I, I think staff knowledge is indispensable, whether it be people that work in kitchen, kitchens or SLPs, curriculum coordinators, facilities, folks, even immersion teachers. That input is indispensable. We shouldn't be, as a district or as a board, we can't be afraid of it. We can't keep it at arm's length. As a teacher, I witnessed expensive curriculum adoptions and other programs that were taken on. And then within maybe a couple of years, they went by the wayside. And I think some of the reason that that happened was because we weren't connecting the people who are actually putting these things or using the curriculum we had. That information wasn't getting to the board. They didn't have sufficient information to make a good decision. So staff have a ground level view and, and they have the experience to help recommend or not recommend a, a practice or curriculum, as I said, or a procedure. And to avoid these mistakes to, so we don't waste any time or resources and, and we don't have the ability to print money. I know. We need to hear from classified folks, licensed people and administrators. It's just essential. Board members are entrusted by the public to, to forward the goals as I said before, but they can't do that unless they get the information. It's just, so it has to, it has to be free flowing. As a former employee, it's semi, semi aim to have staff make, make those decisions. I, I, I understand that. But they, that, that info has to go to the board. I, I just think having someone on the board who has been in the district, all these committees. I, I've seen over and over what happens when staff input is not heard. And it's, it's overly filtered or insulated. We just don't think we have the luxury of making the, any mistakes for their funds or more importantly, our, our kids. We need to work closely with staff to make sure we don't make, make those errors. Thanks.
All right. I have question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means in your experience in your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
Okay. When I was a teacher at Monroe, I saw Monroe's demographic and its, and its SES change significantly from when I started in nineteen eighty-seven to when I retired in two thousand and eighteen. I think we were the second highest SES in the district at that time, back when. And towards the last few years, I, I believe we were maybe the second lowest or third lowest in our district. The change was significant and I, I totally get it. There were kids in my class, not just my immersion classes, but the other classes that I taught that were unhoused, ill clothed and under significant economic pressure. Any, anybody who's taught kids knows that poverty is a significant obstacle in student success. If we have hungry kids, they, they can't excel. It's hard to concentrate. It's just hard to be a student. This is why so many employees working in schools have snacks in their desk. It's not just for the teacher or the classified employee. It's for, for all the kids that need something during the day. A lot of people know that firsthand. Educators try to minimize poverty's impact by differentiating for these kids with regard to materials. They may need a copy of their book so they can keep at home or wherever they are. Some, as I said, somewhere unhoused. The, the modes in which they submit work, the timelines when they submit work. Brother supports, those things need to be adjusted to, to take this to take poverty into account. It's a tricky business. It's often a little difficult to determine because of, of the embarrassment of some students who are in this, in this situation. But it's certainly very important. When, when COVID hit, I think our whole district really realizes this in a big way, especially in with regard to tech access with devices that a 4J has, has found out that are really needed in, in, in certain areas of our, our district. Wifi was inequitable. So I think we've all learned quite a few lessons in this regard. And I salute Oregon and 4J for, to, to they've realized the importance of wraparounds and with, with student success. And I think we're going to continue to, to learn in this regard. I also think we can do even better by improving, I've said this before, but it bears repeating. Improved sustained community engagement, which could really help better map where the wraparound services need to go. And where and how kids and families fall through the cracks. We can't just take one, take the pulse of the, of the, of the community and call it good. I think we're, we, we know now that, that this is something that's always in flux. We need to ensure the kids get the same access, the same breadth of curriculum. That it's not limited to whatever their economic status, economic status is. And that's with regard to books, instruments, uniforms and other classroom materials. I think continuing to partner with EEF and other entities and charities is, can be very, very valuable. And one other thing I'd like to point out, and it has to do with the board is, is, is representational equity. I think I'm not the first person to, to bring this up, but I think we could provide funding for childcare of working parents to apply for board, board seats and committees to give, it was a better, a broader representation of, of, of people on committees and on the board.
Yes, Tom. I have question six, which is in what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district and what would you bring to this work?
I, I credit the district for its work on the, on the new safety, student safety policy. It's, it's ongoing. We're in the process of finding a path where we're not just some students. But all students can feel safe in schools and that's, it's not an easy process, but I, I think it's longer overdue and I'm really glad that we're, we're on that road. I also think that the equity tool is a very positive step in the right direction. But to me, and I've said this before, it's, it's sustaining the community engagement, which is so important to pinpoint how the equity tool can be applied. It's a moving target, of course, and you know, our collective and our individual cultures migrate. They, they aren't always, always going to be the same. Translation and interpretation services were augmented. I think that's great. I'm married to a person who pushed for these two things for many years. My wife was the ELT coordinator for 4J for nearly twenty years and this, she was one of the, if not the point person for this for, for a long time, but now it's much better. 4G knows that, that these services need to be formalized. They have dedicated funding and people on staff. So I'm really happy to see that. Wraparound services, which I've, I've talked about before. I'm glad that we're sharing and we're borrowing ideas from other school districts. That's, that's excellent. Tech access, devices, wifi. I, I think all those things are important. However, I think some, sometimes imposing an equity lens can be controversial or unpopular. And I'll, I'll give you an example here. At, at Buena Vista, which is a feeder school to the school I worked in. The, the school realized there were, it didn't look like the other schools in, in our district. And it wanted to make changes. It wanted to include more Latinx students via busing, by expanding boundaries, diversifying its population. This idea was not popular at first among some families at Buena Vista. But it, it has helped make Buena Vista, their, their SES level is more like those of others or those other schools in 4J. The IP numbers are more like other schools and I believe all, I've seen it, all immersion kids have benefited from kids who, who are Spanish speaking, native Spanish speakers teamed with English native speakers. Sometimes it can be a little uncomfortable to change, but this has been a boon, I think, for, for the entire program. This is an example. This is an example. It's essential that we hear from everyone and I, I can't say that enough. I think I've said it four times already. What would I bring to this, to this work, you know, as, as bargaining chair for the, for the, for EEA? We had input sessions at all grade levels. We had a sped advisory group. I co-chaired the progress monitoring committee and other groups were, the, another groups were, they're very valuable to me to understand where the inequities lay in, in schools. And I've learned from these experiences that listening to those affected were the key to, to the right decisions. Thanks.
I'm next, Tom, and I just want to let you know you're really close to time, so I want to make sure. Last question.
Thank you.
How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? And what would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
It's always been a pleasure to listen to students at board, at board, board meetings. They can be long and they can be intense and I've, I've always loved it, but they also boost four J's effectiveness. And I know when, every time I slowed down and I, and I really listened to kids and incorporated their input in my lessons and in my unit, I did a better job. I think the same holds true with the district as a whole. I, I, I think we could do, our presence as people and committees on the board, I think, would help. I think also to, to provide them with, for example, for example, with Google Forms that are sponsored by the, the district to survey groups and get student reps to, to give us that information would be helpful. GANUS, I think, would be key. There are other student entities that also could be very helpful in, in improving what we do and how we, and getting that input from, from kids. So I'm, I would be very, I would love to be part of that. So I know I'm very close to time, so I'll, I'll end it there.
Thank you so much. And you know that we will be voting on, on appointing new members on Wednesday, April twenty seventh, coming right up at six o'clock. So welcome to join or tune in.
Okay. Take the opportunity.
You ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready, yeah.
So we have twenty-five minutes for interviews and you got the questions from us, correct?
Yes.
Great. And so we're just gonna, do you want any kind of time check or you want to just monitor that yourself?
I, I think I practiced and I think I'm, I'm within like maybe two to three minutes of leeway.
Great. Then I have the first question to ask.
Okay, thank you.
One of the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in their social and emotional lives, and how would you measure success?
First of all, thank you so much for having me back. This is quite a pleasure. I'm having a little bit more time to expand on my ideas. It's rather refreshing. So my short answer to this question is important things the board can do to work to improve students' experience and outcomes. I would say to address the needs of the students where they're at in a respectful, responsible, restorative and culturally competent way. And I, and I know that sounds like a lot. There's a lot in that and it's a tall order. And I do believe that folks at our district in four J are working really hard to do that. And I think that with a clear vision, we can achieve even more. A couple of things that I can also offer that are important is to really review the policies and practices that support and create an inclusive and safe environment for all of our students. Policies such as every student belong and anti-bullying harassment policies. I also would offer to have a mechanism and processes in place to ensure consistent implementation of board policy across the district. Making sure that staff understand how to implement them and have the supports to do it. We can't just add more to their workload, right? But if done well, I think we can make life better for everyone. We also need to identify how to best support the needs of the schools to carry out this work clearly. Keep communication lines open with students, students and their families. What is working for them and what do they still need? Working also closely with our superintendents and their administrators to ensure that those needs are being met and addressed. And let's be honest, right? The resources are finite and we have some funding from the state right now that is unique in our history of the state with the SIA plan funded and ESER funds right now, that's used in to, to help our students. Last thing about how would we measure the success? This sounds a little bit wonky, right? But honestly, it just means that we have to be clear on what we are looking for. Are students still absent a lot? Are they having discipline issues? Are they passing older classes? Are they having mental issues? And we have to especially look at our marginalized students. So when I was a language learner myself, right, oftentimes I found myself in the back of the, of the class, of the room. And, and I always wonder if this school care about me, if they knew my, my challenges. So do we know who our students are, who are experiencing difficulties? Also, as a board member, I would invite us to look closely and scrutinize the student investment account plan and the district continuous improvement plan that was submitted by the district leadership and approved by the board. Paying close attention at the students' performance metrics and goals that are used to measure success per state requirements, right? But also look at, to what we now refer to as strict data. Meaning data that's coming from folks that are most affected by the inequities in our education system who are also most impacted by the decisions that are made in district and boardrooms around the state without sometimes taking into account their voices. So do we know how our families, our community, what they need and how they feel about their needs? And do we have a way of continuously bringing them back to ensure that their needs are being managed?
Thank you, Carlos. I have your second question for you. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community, community engagement look like to you and what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
So the, the board, I believe, plays a critical role. We are here to serve our families. We're here to serve the educational needs of our students. And, and we're also here to ensure that we're being physically responsible with the state school funding that is being allocated to our districts. Community engagement, what does it look like? This means welcoming community input, even when we may not agree with them, but also seeking it out. And we can't say enough about model, model, model. Our students are watching. Our families are watching. We need to model simple discourse, right? Let's reach out to community groups, parents, students, affinity groups. We have to be proactive and non-defensive, really listen to understand. Just as one example, right? I think a lot of people have no idea what immigrant families go through. They don't know sometimes how, if they feel safe, be advocating for their children. In addition, seventy-five percent of four J holders don't have a child in school. How can we keep their support of public education so that they will continue to support school funding and equity? We need to invite community to the conversation. Specific ways that I would work with the board to engage community stakeholders? Too often, right? We expect parents and students to come to us to advocate. I strongly believe in going out where the people are at, where the families are at. Visit their schools, their neighborhoods and make connections with them. I think that language justice is very important, but it can also be a real barrier oftentimes for our non-English speakers. I hope that with my own personal background and skill sets and connections with the community, I can help build bridges.
Thank you. Our third question is that people and groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
Yes. I, I don't think that promise in all things, to all people ultimately helps anyone. But I do believe that we have a responsibility to listen and listen and listen well, to ensure that our community are being heard. But we oftentimes, right, have to redirect. There is a time and a place for folks who do this to our board meetings, public participation in the agenda. Follow up with our inquiries and we make sure that, that we encourage our district staff to be able to make sure that they match their resources within these our families are bringing to us during our board meetings.
Number four, what role do you think staff members' voices should play in four J policies and practices?
Again, I, a very critical and crucial role that they play. I believe that the quality of stress in relationships with the association is very, very important. I see that as their first avenue for staff to communicate their needs with our board. We need to see our teachers, our staff as allies. Our teachers are the people in the trenches. We know that. It's a cliche, but it's true. I spent twelve years in the classroom and this was my experience. I knew what my students needed. I knew what my community needed and I knew what was working and not working for the students. I needed to see my administrators, that's my allies, and my school board as a place that could listen, to hear out our needs and, and create policy and practices to support the needs of our teachers. We need to, to, it's, you know, without saying that, digging into account their voices as we make decisions that will impact them directly.
I have question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
I think of all the questions, it was a question that was a little bit closer to my heart. I was one of the students who, my dad was a school bus driver. He just retired two years ago. And, and I lost my mother when I was three years old. So I, I know firsthand what it's like to not just go to school without having the resources that I needed to be successful, but also without having, without having the support of a loving parent, of a parent at home. And so I know what it's like as a, as a young person to wake up at five thirty in the morning to get the six o'clock bus and go to school and work and play soccer in the afternoon and then teach English as a second language in an evening school until nine o'clock and then go get home at ten and do homework, go to bed at midnight and then do that blockwork in the second day. So I understand the experiences of our students, our families in that situation. I think that implementing the district's equity lens with fidelity and consistency when we are making these decisions that are impacting our students is really crucial. For me, it has, and it has always been about ensuring that students under my care have the right resources they need to succeed at the right moment in their education and that I stepped, that I take steps to identify and remove the barriers to their success. And you know, and I know that these barriers did not originate themselves, by themselves. There were people and systems that created those barriers. So I think that as a, as a, as a board, we have a responsibility to look at what are, are there practices and policies in our system that are failing dating our students and not providing the resources that they need to succeed? This is a key part of focus of throughout my career. And I really believe that if you meet the needs of these students, they will not only graduate, but they'll have a fair and a fair shot at their future.
On to number six.
Thank you.
And number six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district and what would you bring to this work?
Again, this has been a focus on much of my life's work. And so I'm really pleased to see that the focus on, on, on eliminating, eliminating inequities is, is paramount to this board. And I've also experienced this in my own lived experience navigating a, a, a society and, and workspaces are right? We have to commit from kindergarten to culturally competent education. Creating a welcoming culture in our schools for immigrant families is really key. LGBTQ families, children with disabilities, the children who often have not been welcomed or felt welcomed in our school. Some of this is funding, right? Schools with greater needs need more resources. Some of this is curriculum. Diverse, anti-racist curriculum is good for all students. Some of this is staff, right? Are we supporting our diverse staff so they don't leave? I remember being the only staff person of color in many jobs, being the first one and oftentimes the only one. And it can be, it can be lonely and discouraging. So the question is, are we supporting all the staff on their own understanding of equity? So that we build relationships and make it a positive place to work where more students can actually succeed in that environment.
I have your last question. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
I feel like I am the happiest when I am surrounded by students. And it's something that as an educator, being in the classroom, being as a building principal and a district work has actually been a, the biggest challenge for me where I have to consciously seek out opportunities to still stay engaged with students. And so I would support a hundred percent increasing this participation of students' voice. And not only are there more opportunities for youth to participate, but we need to be proactive and go to them. And so one way that I did this just recently is about two years ago, you might recall the student investment account plan and the need for communities to be engaged and for us to go out and to our focal groups and then engage the community in our process. One of the things was, was youth voice as well. And so, so I supported many districts included, four J actually. At Pelé Middle School, we hosted a, a, a community engagement with our Latinx families. And I helped interpret and bring the families together with Karen and Benes and Simba. And, and we also did that with our youth equity council. At the ESD right now, we have a, a number of like, I would say about eighty students or so from about nine school districts that come together to discuss issues. that come together to discuss issues of equity. Around the SIA Plan Student Success Act properly, we wanted to look at who are the students who are graduating, right? What's their attendance like, their rate of success? Are ninth grade on track? Or how many students are failing so many classes? How many students are taking CTE courses and were not? This youth went out to their schools and engaged their teachers, their students, and their families, and collected data. And they came back to the ESD with their peers, and they analyzed the data. And they looked at the inequities that they found, right? And they asked the question, what can we do about that? And many of them went back to their districts, and they presented to their board their findings. And they helped them. That was the voice. Many of the district took their voice and their input to create the student investment account plan that they ended up with. This is one of the ways, right? But I believe that it can't be a one-and-done, right? It is to be an iterative way of engaging our students, just like engaging our communities throughout the year to make sure that we are not just asking them what they need, but checking in with them how we meet them are and what else, how aren't we doing, and how can we do it better? I believe that the place where our students right now, they come in, they're student leaders, they come to our boards. And frankly, I've been in hundreds and hundreds of board meetings, right? Either as a participant, as a teacher, as an educator, as a parent. And I see the effort that we put in to help our students. And oftentimes, the students only, they tell us what is going on in their school. They tell us about their events, about their athletic events, about their play, about school, which is good. It's important. We need to hear that what's happening. But I have to wonder, are we including them also in our decision-making process? Do they know the challenges and the struggles that our district are going through? Do they know the successes that we're experiencing as a district? And I think that being more mindful and intentional about including their voices in our spaces would be, it's really important. And maybe we could be the district that leads the state in having actually a student have equal voting, right, at the rest of the board? I know that's really out there progressive, but hey, we are 4J, right? We can do this. And I think that there is opportunity for us to think about ways to, that are not current right now around the state, and including youth voice more intentionally and thoughtfully. I think it's a wonderful idea, thought to embark. And I'm hoping, I would love to be part of that.
I think that was our last question, so...
How do I do with time, did I?
You did. Great. So we are going to be voting on new board members on Wednesday, April 27. We have a special meeting to do that. So you're welcome to join us or listen in.
Sure.
And we really thank you for your time for being here.
Thank you.
How are you? Good evening. Thank you. Welcome. I want to be sure you got your questions, that you got to see them. We have seven questions for the interview.
There was an email, yes.
Great. Okay. So we have 25 minutes for each interview. And I don't know if you want us to do a time check for you or you're just gonna monitor your own time?
I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you might have. What you do with the time is up to you.
Okay. Great.
I try not to be very verbose about things.
Well, then I will start with your first question. And that is, what are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in their social and emotional lives? And how would you measure success?
I measure success by one word, thriving. And I know it when I see it. Some students go on to college, some go on to a trade. But if they are well-adjusted and ready to be citizens, then you've done your job, it seems to me. As far as the most important things for social, emotional learning, I believe there should be a strong mental health program. There's been evidence of that brought in. And it should be intertwined with the learning experience, especially when it comes to social studies-type classes. I mean, social in itself is valuable, emotional well-being. I think that the 4J department is doing very well in that. We're seeing a counter example that's making the news right now, in which the state of Florida has banned certain math textbooks specifically because of SGL, as they call it, social emotional learning. And they think that has no place in math, being cooperative among each other. Their way is not our way. And I am glad that Florida is about as far as possible to be and still be in the United States, both geographically and in terms of possible policy goals. I think teacher retention is important, too. I believe having teachers who have been around and know not only their subject very well, but know the community and can know about students as they pass through the schools so that someone who is teaching senior English has some awareness of what their students were like when they were freshmen and then who is standing out either in needs or inability or both. You can't replace that with just enthusiasm.
Thank you, Andrew. I have your next question. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you? And what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
It's not a standard item on every agenda. The opportunity for concerned community members, parents, or anybody else with an interest to come forward and make their feelings known. Are our times and places of meetings not well-known and publicized? This is an open invitation for people. If they want to engage, they can. And if we have a message, we can broadcast it on our website. By passive consent, no problem.
Thank you. Our third question is that people in groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside of the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
I would respond by saying they are outside the board's role or authority. That was easy. If they want to pursue it further despite it not being part of the role or authority, I would do my best to listen and explain further and address their concern outside my role as a board member, if I was one, if that was remotely appropriate. I do like to have people go away feeling heard.
My turn. What role do you think staff members' voices should play in 4J policies and practices?
Very essential role. They are the voices that we can hear in order to know what's going on. Teachers are in the building. Not just teachers, but kitchen workers, custodial workers. They see and hear, and if they have an issue, we'd better make sure that our environment is a safe place for them to come to, to speak the truth to us, because we have the burden of knowing things. And if they're either afraid to tell us because they think they won't be treated well if we don't like what we hear from them, then we're going to have a lot of trouble. There's a certain man in Russia who is learning what it's like to have surrounded himself with only people who tell him what he wants to hear. It's not be like that.
Are you taking notes? Hold on. I have question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
One of the most wonderful ways in which 4J addresses poverty in maybe some schools in Oregon, I discussed this on the internet, when people have, you know, questions or comments they're making about some child who was shamed by the staff because they needed the free lunch program, and they either had to have a special pass or they had to pay something towards it. And if they didn't have it, everybody knew about it, and it was an invitation for bullying. And I say, that's outrageous. Let me tell you what happens at my boys' school. They thought a certain number of people in a particular district qualified for the lunch. Then everybody gets the lunch. They discovered through experience that it costs less to just do that and to have nutritious food available for everybody equally than to have spent resources on means tests that could just go to food. And people are weeping with the sense that they wish that that was happening in their area, too. That's something. My experience with poverty in particular has been in my role as a criminal defense attorney, which included the vast majority of my cases, as the majority of cases in Lane County Circuit Court were those who qualified for court-appointed counseling. And this included a lot of younger people. I didn't appear in juvenile court, but I had people who were past 18 and were about to see a felony conviction before they hit 19, usually for possession of drugs, but sometimes for theft. And we've had a mentality that I believe was imposed on us by outside interests that funded ballot measures for harsh sentences. I knew prosecutors who did not want Measure 57 to pass, who lobbied against it. They are people seeking convictions, and they try to balance cases. You know, then the laws reduce judges to the role of barcode reader, saying, you go to prison, you go to finishing school for career criminals. Most of these 18-year-old addicts or nonviolent property offenders were people who had dropped out of school, who were lost, who were not done making yet. And I tried to help some of them, and I did get to listen to their stories, which was often difficult because they were understandably not eager to trust someone who was wearing a suit and was bourgeois, middle-class. And I found it a mark of pride that a lot of them felt like I was the first person who looked like me to pay attention to them, to care. And some of them ended up getting on probation and getting their GEDs and getting their lives in order and crediting me for it. Some of these younger offenders were the children of people whose divorces I handled. We're getting way off the subject of education, but parents are involved, too. And I would mention to some of the people, if they were here, who had made speeches the other day about how parents and children were the most important part of the school district, they're leaving something out. We act in loco parentis as teachers, and therefore, our judgment is, if not equal to the parents, at least it is standard and informed, which is true of some parents, but not all. And not all of those who are in the most distressed circumstances, who are trying to raise children with a job on low money in a food-desert part of town, with cars that don't work as easily, much of a time budget that is harder than those who can afford cleaning services, a single income within the household, things like that. So those are things I've understood. And those parents, often they came to me after years after a nuclear divorce in which they used their child as a weapon of war or as a toy. I had them stealing vehicles. We can do better.
Thank you. I have number six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district? And what would you bring to the work?
I'm not sure I'm going to be answering that question. You know what the board has done because you've served on it for a period of time. And I may not have been paying quite as much attention, but we have a diversity problem. We have an equities problem nationwide. And once again, places like Florida are making the opposite approach of what we want. And one of the, maybe the biggest reason I decided to offer my services over here was what I have been seeing happening in other boards of education that are making news stories when people are trying to erase history under the guise of saying it is critical race theory, but it isn't. People who are trying to erase stories as not being age-appropriate when they are in fact about people of the same age as the students who would be reading those stories and who need to know that if they are transgender, they are not alone. If their skin color is different from the cast of Lord of the Flies, that there are stories about them and that they can be seen. I think there's an extent to which they're doing it. The banned books are not being banned or challenged around here, but there's nine of them in a school where I live to school that are being challenged, not by boards of ed, but by angry parents. And those parents are very certain that the stories are working their children's minds, although they have not read them, and they do not know what it's about. One of the books I just read was called Jack of Cards and Other Cards, and it was one of the ones that actually made me a bit concerned about its appropriateness. It talks about a boy who is having sex, and they use words that my wife had to remind me that I knew when I was eight years old. So that's really, you know, and the boy has a relationship advice blog that does in fact include what I considered very useful advice that people needed to hear and who might not be hearing it from certain parents whose attitudes towards uncomfortable subjects is just don't, which I also know from my own youthful experience, will not be followed. I was at a party once when I was 17 or so, and there was alcohol in an upper room, and there were adults on the ground floor rooms. And there was a kid who drank so much that he passed out and had turned pale, and his pulse was weak. And we're like, we gotta get help. This kid might be in a whole lot of trouble. And they said, don't, Dad will kill us if he finds out. And so they kept, they kept living. But I never forgot that people had parents different from my father, who frankly, I could always trust to listen to me before punishing is appropriate, but to be someone who would make sure that safe things happened. There was a story that doesn't really get challenged very much. It was called "The Wave." Any of you may have known about it. It was about a teacher whose kids, whose students didn't understand the Holocaust and how such a thing could have happened. And it's based on a true story. The guy made an experiment in which he created Hitler Youth in his class by forming a society. And it got out of hand, and he had to stop it after a while, and then teach them, this is what happened. And if you, and the teacher... And if you had, and, and, and the teacher who showed that movie towards us said, if you had been in Germany, you too would have been a Nazi. And I, I cried. That, that broke me. I, I didn't eat for a little while. And one of the most devastating things about that story is the unpopular kid who got bullied got to be popular in that society for once. And when the society ended, the story, at the end of the story was the teacher comforting him because he was probably more than anyone else. And my dad said, what's up with you? And I said, if I'd been in Germany, I would have been a Nazi later. And I was with, became one of the party for making jokes about it. He knew me.
I have your last question.
All right.
How do you think students can engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
Listening, having activities. This is like community engagement. Again, a standard, uh, a standard component of every meeting's agenda, I believe, is having three or four high schools start saying what was going on. And it was one of the more enjoyable parts of the meeting, hearing from them. You know, they're already engaged. But we want to have a, um, a forum like this one or other forums in which they have a place that they know that they can go. They can be in a student handbook if they, they have, I mean, when I was in school, I knew the school board members were only because, number one, their pictures appeared in the front of the yearbook. That's how I knew their names from year to year. And number two, oh, I recognized this one here who had gotten onto the school board for the purpose of pushing, pushing, pushing her own really gifted child to have the most college-worthy resume possible. You know, went to the director of the school play, made sure they knew Jimin's snake dance. Let's not be like that, but that, you know, they're, the board is not really a factor in a lot of students' development, but it's nice to know there's a function that they choose to be involved.
Just wanted to make sure our pictures aren't to anybody's yearbook.
No, how are you in your book?
Just here.
This was my yearbook. This is, this was, this was, I, I came here from New York State, please don't hold that against me, but.
All right. Well, that's, do you need a gift?
I think so.
All right. I went, I went, I went really fast. I hope that's not too problem.
No, no, we, we appreciate it. Um, you were very concise, so thank you. And, um, on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, April twenty-seventh, we will be having a special meeting and voting on the new matters.
That's two days from now.
Two days from now.
Well, I'm honored to be part of the process. Thank you for inviting everybody.
Thank you.
Are we gonna take a recess now and come back or?
Yeah, I think we have to recess.
This and that.
You, yes, I think I just recessed.
So is this playing video on YouTube like the previous, uh, presentations?
I feel famous.
I'm going to recess this work session and we will be resuming, I believe at seven forty-five at Q and B. Oh, great. We will reconvene the, um, work session of the 4J School Board on, um, April twenty-fifth and it is seven forty-five. And we're going to reconvene our interviews and we have Michelle Su up here. Welcome. So Michelle, we have twenty-five minutes for, um, interviews and we're starting three minutes late, so you get additional three minutes, don't worry. There you go. And I want to be sure you got the, you got the questions sent to you?
I did.
Yes, great. So, you know, there's seven of them and, um, I don't know if you want any, um, prompts for time or you're just good since you have the clock up here?
I'll try to keep it brief.
Thank you. Then I'll go ahead and ask you the first question. What are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in their social and emotional lives? And how would you measure success?
Out of three things. And the first one is, um, that the board could work on providing the resources needed.
Excuse me, Michelle. I can't, I would like to really, well, here, let's move back closer, so. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. No, I didn't. For Jack. The board could work on providing the resources needed to implement HP two A four five for ethnic studies in all schools before the twenty-twenty-six term line. Representation in curriculum of those who have been historically marginalized is critical in developing an environment of belonging. Exposure to a wider range of different lived experiences, open space and safety for the freedom to explore self-identity. Safe spaces provide balance for greater self-expression. Success would be measurable in a decrease in incidences of bullying and harassment and an increase in curiosity and empathy. The board could also work on the introduction of digital and information literacy at all grade levels, scaffolded according to changing needs. This would require librarians in every school. Librarians and information specialists guide students to understand the reliability and credibility of resources accessed online. Oftentimes, the search box is our first point of contact when we have unanswered questions. Finding accurate information is a skill that is developed. It is needed both to attain knowledge and to avoid misinformation and disinformation. Digital literacy includes navigating social media. Internal studies done by social media companies were revealed late last year to show effects on adolescent mental health, both positive and negative. Our current reality is that students experience everything from bullying to connecting to peers with similar passions that is all online. The possibilities are endless. The importance of discernment in online environments is essential and particularly relevant for students attending HJ Online Academy. Success would be measurable in student ability to cite references as well as profession, cross-reference, improvement in academic work, and a decrease in the amount of time spent on assignments. Living through a pandemic, it is all the more important for students to have safe and secure interactions online. And the last is, um, the rise in anxiety and depression resulting in mental health crises in our community. It's a crisis of isolation and despair during pandemics. The board could work to de-stigmatize mental illness and disease. Talking about our feelings, experiences, and fears in times of uncertainty is necessary. Sharing stories and practicing vulnerability with skilled and trusted staff supports social and emotional learning. Success surrounds, success surrounding mental illness is challenging to measure. I, I could not think of concrete ways to measure success, um, because it's determined by, you know, information that's tracked and documented over a long period of time. So that's a tough one, but, um, I think that's probably the most important thing that all should be conservative.
I have your second question. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you and what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
Community engagement to me looks like listening and asking questions to determine what our community needs from their perspective. I see the board's role as starting to accommodate students and staff with the resources available to the district by researching and compiling information and prioritizing needs according to immediate ones while planning for future ones. A specific way I could work with the board in engaging stakeholders is for community is, um, by using my language skills and, um, my cultural background to connect with Asian and Desi friends, neighbors, and community organizations. I have the gift of traveling, living, and working in many different places and am adept at communicating with all sorts of people.
Thank you. Our, our third question is that people. Here's the third question. People in groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
If lobbied by people or organizations, I would let them know it's outside the scope of my work. And if possible, I would assist in directing them to who could be helpful. I would reference the 4J website, which clearly states board members' roles and authority.
You ready for number four? Oh, wait.
Ready.
More on this, turn it off. Okay, here you go. What roles do you think staff members, boys should play in 4J policies and practices?
I believe in trusting district staff and know it's not helpful to interfere or micromanage. The board is a policy-making entity and implementation is delegated to the superintendent.
I have question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal, federal. And your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
From my own experience, my parents were immigrants in New York with three children living in a two-bedroom apartment. My father went back to school in his thirties for better career opportunities. I remember when resources were limited. I've been working with under-resourced and underserved communities by organizing clothing and food drives since high school. I am grateful that I have the privilege of volunteering with local organizations like the Even Warning Center and E-Corn Community Campaign. E-Corn was started during the pandemic to address food insecurity. Offering free lunch to all students and free meals to families by our dedicated nutrition services staff has proven to be an attainable solution. The board can support the continuation of providing meals and basic necessities to students and families in economic distress in a dignified and culturally responsive way.
It's back to me. I have number six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district and what would you bring to this work?
The board is tasked with selecting members of a well-established equity committee. And this year, the state has followed 4J's need in mandating equity advisor meeting committees in school districts across the state. Elevating the voices representing the diversity in our community has been the district's focus on providing equity. The board unanimously passed a racial harassment policy, the first in 4J history. The focus on centering those who experience harm and also responding to incidents with education and working to restore and transform relationships is ongoing. Training for the entire school community, from staffs, from staff to students, will foster an environment of belonging and inclusion. Committees and policies alone will not eliminate inequity. I am committed to staying informed on and education equity and raising constantly shifting issues to our board.
And I have your last question. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
As far as I know, this year would be the first time that students will be on the equity committee. And I think that's movement in the right direction. I think that's really important. Students' ability to provide direct input on informing decisions could increase participation. Everyone appreciates when their voices are valued. As a board member, I would interact with students to hear their most pressing concerns and work to promote student empowerment.
Thank you. I think that means you, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm a huge doctor.
Oh, you did? You answered all of our questions. You did great and that's, that's all we asked, so it's perfect. And we have our other people here, so that would be great, but, so thank you so much. And I think you maybe already know this, but on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, we will be, um, voting on the new board members. So, um, you're welcome to come or watch or however, whatever you feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jadi. You're okay to start early?
Sure.
Yeah. Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me.
And, um, uh, we have twenty-five minutes for every interview and, um, we're happy to give you any cues if you want more time. You know, there's seven questions. I assume you've got them.
I did have them. And I would love a five-minute warning because I'm not as good as the same as the shot was.
I will do my best on that one, but I also get to call on.
You can assign it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Super. Okay. Perfect. So I'm going to ask you the first question. But first I will put my glasses. What are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' What are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in their social, emotional lives? And how would you measure success?
Thank you. I think the most important thing is involving stakeholders when creating policies. In particular, consider voices of those who will be most impacted. Or put another way, those who will be impacted, who can also provide the least cushion to change their experience based on other privileges that they have. I would like to see a movement away from so much reliance on standardized testing as a measure of school success. And have some more broad-based student engagement assessment that seems to be more accurate indication of how engaged students really are with their education. And I've been thinking about different ways we could try to measure success. It's always, when you get broad-based, it gets more difficult. How do you measure those things? And so some things that we could look at, some of which we are still tracking up, is teacher retention is very important, that continuity for students. And the job satisfaction for teachers translates into a better school environment. Student graduation in underserved communities. For example, in the special ed community, we see a big disparate graduation rate between students receiving special ed services and other students. So I think we need to, there's some tracking of that, but we really want to come up with ways to figure out how to close that gap. Excuse me. I would like, I would like to see how we could measure to make special education more proactive. And by that, I mean, instead of waiting, thank you, instead of waiting for children to fail by a couple of grades or be several grades behind to identify them and provide support, I think one of the ways we could help close that gap, thank you, and achieve more success is by trying to measure how quickly can we identify those students? How quickly can we proactively get those supports to them before they fail? Because at that point, it's that much harder to bridge that gap. I would like to have more engagement of student mental and emotional support. And that can be done through surveys. There may be other ways to measure that as well. I would like to engage student engagement with the curriculum. You know, having that curriculum be relevant to them and their view is one of the strongest ways of keeping our students engaged. And that can involve surveys of students and teachers. And attempting to measure school as an inclusive space racially, culturally, and socially. And this can be done through surveys. It can also be done looking at, you know, how many discipline incidents we're having? How many complaints are we having? You know, things like that. So we really want school to not only be a safe place, but also inclusive, accepted. So students feel like this is the place where they belong and this is the place where they can learn.
Do you want to break there?
Thank you.
Intensive tip.
Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you? And what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
Thank you. I see the board's role as setting policy and policy goals. In terms of what community engagement means to me, I see it as having the community invested in policies and decisions affecting our schools. And I also see it as having the underserved portions of our community represented. I'm willing to help with the community engagement work. And that includes helping respond to community questions and concerns, meeting with students and parents, engaging in board community conversations or focus groups. And to engage community stakeholders, I would suggest, you know, that we've been moving in this direction anyway, having policies with greater support for the underserved portions of our community. I mentioned earlier about that graduation gap with students receiving special education services. You know, 4J is, is, you know, not where we want it to be on the list compared to other school districts. I would like to see that gap closed. I would like, we see similar results in underserved races and ethnicities when that's tracked on those graduation rates. I think the more equity we can achieve in these areas, the greater confidence the public is going to have in our educational system.
Thank you. Our third question is that people in groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside of the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
Sure. Well, the first thing I would do is if someone's lobbying me, I'm going to ask them to express whatever question or concern they have to the entire board. And so that way, the board can jointly determine whether it's within the scope of our authority or our role. As an attorney to someone who's served on numerous boards, I'm trained in, you know, making sure that as board member, you're not going to abuse your power or engage in anything that would pose conflict of interest. So you have to consider the bylaws and the rules of the school board, consider all the facts, and you make a fair decision. And sometimes that decision is determining that it's not within your authority or role. And if that is the case, then that's something where I would work with other board members to try to find, you know, which agency or board would be the best to address that issue.
Thank you.
What role do you think staff members' voices should play in 4J policies and practices?
I think they have a really important voice because they have, you know, perhaps the most direct impact on the educational experience that our students have. So, you know, staff member voices are going to directly impact teacher retention and teacher satisfaction. And the better we're doing on those levels, the more engaged our students are going to be and more effectively our education system is going to work. Also, teachers and staff may see certain issues at a ground level that may not be captured in reports or always, you know, something that we anticipate from a policy. And that's just what happens sometimes with policies. You put the policy in place, there's an unintended consequence. Or perhaps there's a way it can be tweaked or more information that you can use to come back and decide, do you amend the policy? Do you add something to it? And so I think they play a very important voice.
Right. I have number four. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working under, with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
Thank you. First, I guess I'll say I do have a lot of experience working with underserved communities. I've spent in excess of 4,000 hours during program work in the legal field. I've represented prisoners with medical developmental disabilities, refugees seeking asylum, low-income tenants and their families, undocumented immigrants who've been victimized by employers. I have worked to fundraise for legal aid in Lane County. I've also done charitable work for underserved communities in Lane County, including Square One Villages. I served on the Eugene Public Library Foundation tour. And during my tenure, we launched Imagination Library, which means to increase literacy for children. I've also just done volunteer work with my family on a personal basis. And that's included working at Pasi Al Baritos for burrito per day and, you know, working in Eugene Mission on holidays to prepare meals. I volunteer with famine and medical relief outreach in parts of the U.S. and Zambia. And I guess another thing I should mention is that I have a 29-year-old as well as three younger children. I became pregnant when I was a teenager. And, you know, I spent several years living on welfare myself. And I know very much, you know, what it's like when your car breaks down. There goes your grocery budget for a week or maybe worse, maybe it's a month. So living below the federal poverty line means, to me, it means that you are in danger of any single event, just a circumstance of bad luck, bringing you out. You can't count on dental care or healthcare. There are big gaps in what's covered, no matter what kind of welfare you're on. You don't have adequate or reliable transportation. You have to worry about housing for factors that are outside of your control. You often lack food, or the food that you do have access to is not very nutritionally. And it's also just living under this amount of daily stress that I think many of us, you know, take for granted that we don't have in our lives. And that constant, you know, wondering how relevant these school topics are when you have these really pressing survival needs that affect you and your family. So I would, and I would add that it shouldn't even just be the bottom 20%. Half of our country struggles to make ends meet. We're probably seeing more income inequality than we've had in an extremely long time. So this is a really fundamental issue affecting our society right now and one that's filtered down to our schools. I think we need to make sure that the educational opportunities we provide to children and families do not depend on things that we take for granted. During the pandemic, we saw some of the computers at home, knowledge of certain technology, reliable internet, especially in some of the rural areas, is really, is something that I know some of the Lane County commissioners are working on, but we have a long way to go. Having a reliable home computer or printer, having reliable transportation, that really affects a lot of children's abilities to go to the choice schools, even if they get the lottery for the school that they want. And parents having time to help their children with their schoolwork or hire a tutor or even put them in certain after-school activities. In terms of what we can do, I think looking at what additional resources we can provide for those students to help bridge those gaps and to create a level playing field, I think considering the hidden impacts of our policies and these things that we might take for granted that would affect how effective policies are. And I think having stakeholders and community leaders weigh in on our policies to make sure that we are aware of the impact and how best to address those.
Thank you. It's back to me, number six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district? And what would you bring to this work?
Thank you. I would like to thank the board for passing the racial harassment policy that was recently passed. I think that's a great, great step. I think that we can do more in that direction. I would like to see us really engage leadership of educators of color. I would like to see us make sure that our education policies and curriculum honor the histories and cultures of people of color and the indigenous. And by way of example, I mean, when I went to school, and I ask students this all the time, when I went to school, my school was rated a top-level school. Excuse me. We didn't learn about so much. There were so many cases missing from our. I'm sorry.
Take a minute.
Don't worry.
You do have lots of time.
You're good. I'm going to get to the carpet in here, so I'm. What I was going to say is, I didn't learn about certain parts of history. As an Asian-American person, I didn't learn about the Queremont suitcase. I didn't learn about the Iwo. I didn't learn about all the contributions that Asian-Americans made to the struggle for civil rights in American history. And we didn't even learn in our school curriculum about internment camps until college. Those types of gaps and so many others that we are learning about are very important to make sure that they're included and that they're not just glossed over or left out. I think they're highly relevant to all parts of our community. It's important to make sure they're included in our curriculum. I would also say that we should be engaging students, staff, and the board in conversations about these issues. At Square One Villages, excuse me, we recently had Aisha Elliott do an anti-racism conversation training for us, was fantastic. Condemn Bar Twins also offer courageous conversations, creating those spaces where people can talk about these issues and students can feel heard and recognized and their experiences validated but not normalized. I think that's very important. I also, as an attorney, am very interested in making sure that discipline systems are free from bias. As you may know, there's a school-to-prison pipeline in the U.S. That's a big problem. We see huge disparity in the justice system as it affects people of color. Oregon's travel incarceration rate in particular is one of the worst in the country. And it's exacerbated when you have children with disabilities or deny the special education supports that they need. So I think bridging some of the special education gaps that I talked about and investing in counselors with student support would be very important.
Last question. Give it a second. You really do have time, Zeke.
Thank you.
How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
I think this is a really key question in light of where we stand now, having gone through two years of pandemic. We have higher rates of depression and suicide among our youth than in a long time. We have a lot of children struggling. Again, I want to go back to the special education community. We have a lot of children that had health issues that we have required them to learn from home, when unfortunately, educationally, that's doubly difficult for a lot of the children who remote learning is not as effective. I think you also have a lot of student disengagement because of this break in social structure over the past few years. So I think the first thing I would do is acknowledge the importance of students' social and emotional wellbeing, that it's a priority to the board, that's a priority of policies that we're going to take. I would increase counseling support and suicide prevention and want to talk to experts in those fields to try to figure out what the best way of doing that is. I think balancing technology and screen time, technology is a wonderful thing, but sometimes we can get caught up in our own world and there are studies that show that, you know, technology doesn't actually always support emotional health. I think having students involved in meetings with decision-makers, having students on the equity committee is great. I think having them involved in as many of the decisions that would make their curriculum and their school experience relevant for them is important. Having surveys about curriculum and the school climate. And I think also supporting student journalism and reporting, ensuring them to do that, which really gives them a voice and teaches them how to exercise that voice.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think you heard me say earlier that on Wednesday, April 27th, we'll be voting on board, you know, board appointments. So if you want to attend or listen, you're very welcome.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the entire board for having me.
Judy?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, boy.
That's okay. I just want, I wanted to raise that we should be telling people with the same thing that you just said at the end, also that they may be sworn in. I mean, that the people who get chosen will be sworn in on Wednesday. So somebody might choose to come in person instead of watch on Zoom.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I think we have a few people here that room, four of us, so we'll make sure the others know.
Daniel, you go next. Daniel will go next. We're switching. Great. You guys are switching places? All right. Great. Thanks, Dan. Got me confused there for a minute.
I think we're gonna switch, and they're replying.
Great. That would be a good trick. Thanks, Daniel. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
You know, you heard you have 25 minutes for the interview, and you've sort of seen us asking questions. So again, let me know if you, do you want to see if you have a five-minute warning towards the end or anything?
To be respectful of everyone's time, I remember my down practices that I wouldn't vote for, but...
Perfect.
You know, vote for your own payoffs if you can be, like, part of my career.
Appreciate it. So I'm gonna ask you the first question.
Okay.
Okay. So what are the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in their social and emotional lives? How would you measure success?
Well, first, thank you, everyone, for, this has been an incredibly high-quality experience in 4J. I don't pretend to have healthy answers here. What I do have is a curious mind, and some of the likes ask a lot of questions. The simple greatest impact we can have on every generation who walks through our doors is a tether or focus on not simply the knowledge we fill our children's brain with, but the health of that brain. Just as we have come down to understand that students struggling with food insecurity cannot be expected to perform on par with students who have never experienced what that feeling is like, we need to add a layer of mental health awareness to every aspect of a childcare education. We need to foster an environment that seeks to teach what self-care is, how to de-stigmatize those experiencing mental health needs, and set the goals of a universal school-based mental health awareness program. Measuring success on this doesn't need to be higher or lower down. Rather, it could be organic up. Students rely on peer support networks that foster more candid dialogue. Teachers and support staff acting as a conduit of their curiosity and giving pointed direction to ensure that they feel seen. Administration serving as a gateway to us so that we can showcase the program and secure the tools and the resources that they need.
I'm next. I just had to finish my sentence. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you? And what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community stakeholders?
As a board, we are the ambassadors for the district. Next to the teacher of a parent's child, we are the most visible aspect of the district, whether in line with a grocery store or here in the boardroom. As such, we need to be prepared to discuss our challenges and opportunities in productive ways to create an open relationship with the community and... If they do not feel connected to the success of 4J, or they don't have confidence in each of us, we cannot succeed. While our job is to set policy and vision, our boss is ultimately the people. And we need to continually prove the value of our vision we aspire to, which includes vigorously advocating for the unpopular yet right course of action we need to take. A specific example? All of us have voiced the importance of mental health care awareness in most of the speeches I've heard. Taking a more active role in our schools. Reaching out to Jennifer at Omni, Roger at Lake County Public Health, UO Behavioral Health, and others at Special Community Forum on student and staff mental health by teachers, students, parents, staff, the board, stakeholders, and the community is a wonderful example of how to take an issue that needs focus, partnering with public, private, and self-profit efforts to engage everyone on it. And it shows that we are committed to drilling down on issues that we are seeing and bringing people most knowledgeable to solutions to the table. The purpose of us all in those sessions is to listen and to hear and to...
Gives me a chance to ketchup.
You okay?
Yeah. Oh, hey.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Here's our third question. People and groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside of the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
This is the easiest question, frankly. It's important to remember that lobbying for one's shared interest is natural and expected. It's not bad. In my role as a planning commissioner, I have folks lobbying us all the time on issues that are in our purview and things that are not. What I try to do is direct folks to the appropriate agency and root those responsible for their concern while not being dismissive. If someone is taking the time to address me about concerns for the city, it's a very small population that's willing to do that. And the last thing I want to do is to try and stifle that optimism passion within our city and try to get them aware that they can be helpful to us.
Thank you.
I'm watching everybody write. And here we go. What role do you think staff members' voices should play in 4J policies and practices?
Everyone's voice matters. Everyone deserves to be seen. And there needs to be a pathway between the crown and the top. But there also needs to be trust that our vision is being translated by people that are prior. And it's a balance. It's a very fine balance. A properly crafted vision allows us to understand how we are tracking toward it during the process of implementation. It's about impact and scale. It's how we take it from the lab to the real world. It isn't a closed environment, meaning that all of the questions we are asking today are comprised within this one. Our teachers and staff hear from our community and outside stakeholders and vice versa. They are also our ambassadors. They will know whether we are doing our job right, whether they are happy, whether we are giving all that we can, or where we can improve. Our ideas on leveling the playing field for 1 in 5 students in poverty will be first recognized by our teachers and staff. The success of our kids looking to engage us will be a reflection of how we'll be engaged with everyone down the pipeline. Our staff is best when they have insight into what is working and what doesn't. We are at our best when we don't advocate our responsibilities for our vision. And our district is at its best if each of these are aligned and have broad community support.
Okay. I have question number five. 20% of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working with under-resourced and underserved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
1 in 5 children in our district, 30 million kids in our country, live in a state of poverty in various ways, perhaps, from too many discussions on school policy at every level. What does that mean? It means 1 in 5 of our kids are likely receiving their main source of nutrition from our kitchen, not theirs. It means the fact that was on display during the pandemic and every one of you was kind enough to reach the skid to get school lunches into people's hands, which was amazing. And it means that 1 in 5 of our kids will arrive at the first day of class and many more without the pencils to be able to do their work, the paper to write on, or the bookbag to carry. 1 in 5 of our kids won't have access to the technology required of them for admission of the 21st century economy. And the main access for the internet for them is our phone. 1 in 5 of our kids will participate in a relay race for their future, where everyone else has been shown the track and knows their role and is equipped to succeed. While in lane five, our child must start down the block without shoes and no guidance on what to do. And worse, that child will be bullied and blamed for their performance. When I taught in Chicago, I served two different groups of students. Graduate students on government and public policy who already knew the system and how to work within it. And I taught writing and reading comprehension to those waiting, wanting to eventually attend higher education, almost exclusively. A latter group was comprised of folks severely compromised by years and sometimes decades of poverty, yet still hopeful that their education was their ticket out of that wavelength. Many could not form sentences. Most lacked a high school diploma. All had a voice telling them inside that it was worthless to try. They have been convinced that they were done and not the system that designed their outcome. I spent countless hours breaking through that perception, looking for a single moment where I'd diggerate their dreams and I failed way more than succeeded. We cannot self-trap, or ourselves, unfortunately. But we can take part within our own world to make and to move that child in lane five to the shared starting line. We can dismantle stigma, encapsulate our embrace of their struggle and in our policies, and defend their rights for the same future all of our children are doing. We can act as servants for their story to help finance and broaden their reach. And we can provide a place for that child where their love, empowerment, and scene is. I'm getting the routine.
In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? How do you see this impacting the district? And what would you bring to this work?
I'm gonna break with my written comments, because I'm gonna dovetail off with what Kenny said. Now, I, I regret to ask, and I can tell you the megaphone was tied in 12:15. I don't for the life of me understand why I know that. I don't know. I didn't know at high school about these kinds. I don't know that answer to that question. And I know that every time we got in history, we'd end about 1905, and we ran out of time every year. And I don't know the answer to that question. But we can have that question later on. I have several times to this question, but let me break this into several points. First, passing the Equity Tools and our racial harassment policy was a great achievement for this district. Last year, Eugene saw a 20% rise in hate bias crimes. Plus, a friend of mine, and I were talking about this just last week. He's the program coordinator here in 4J. And we agree that the district needs regulation, but we cannot regulate inequity from our hearts and our community. That is going to take more work by us. And that is work that also comes from operations. My business partner, when I'm not in the group, is also the Student Alliance Project coordinator in Equity Inclusion at 4J. Just today, he was telling me about donations that 4J is receiving from Walmart, which is massive and wonderful. But the 4J is needing a solution on storing them, physically storing them. We work our network to source a comic shipping container which is still in the process. These seemingly small roadblocks actually are large hindrances to physically getting our collective work in the hands of district's children. When I moved back to Oregon for my small business, I thought I was going to be Captain Kirk, going around leading things. What I ended up being was Scott, fixing things, solving problems, finding solutions, and with limited resources. That's why my business partner is perfect for his role for how I can help as a board member of 4J. The biggest problem we have addressing inequity is the way that people think about it and each other. It all flows, the idea that we can violate elemental standards of not learning and knowledge and reason because differences are more important than our common humanity. Or too many, the only thing that matters in our lives are the distinctions we can draw. As a board, together and individually, we can bring legitimacy to this work by telling the stories of those affected, by connecting cause and effect, and by listening to the whole story, each and every time, in ways that have been called the Henningspeople Web of Mutality.
Okay, I'm almost done. I'm just writing down.
I'm just writing.
Your light came on. I was like, oh, we're doing it on.
But you did figure out the light.
I did.
It's like a laser. This is your last question, but I'll just say it now. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
I want to hear from the students who don't have raised their hand. I want to see, who think that they will be exposed for being the dumb kid without the right answer, because that was me. I was given opportunities that if I had not grown up in a small town, had I not had a teacher to believe in me, I would not be sitting in front of you. I was not agreed to in my elementary school. I was fully important. I could go on for hours about how miserable that experience was, and that is its own thing. But I want programs to give their voice legitimacy and their destiny reclaimed and re-thoughted. We should be encouraging kids to engage us and themselves, developing power around ideas, not just building ideas to increase power. Holding kids into people who don't work merely to operate within machines or to rage against machines, but to build new machines. Not only for self-benefit, but for the benefit of us all. I think if we do that, if we foster multiple lines of communication and empower many different kids from many different backgrounds, we chart a new generation on a path armed with the right tools.
You were very concise. Thanks for writing things down. That was our last question, and we appreciate your time. And again, I think you heard my spiel that on Wednesday, we're gonna be voting on new board members. And if you're present, you get on board, you would be sworn in that night.
Thank you very much, and thank you to staff for ordering.
Thank you.
Do you have more people?
Oh, I heard, like, she come here.
So you're okay?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. I might check on some.
Thanks for being there.
Thanks for being prepared.
Hi, Thomas.
Hello, Judy. How are you?
You ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, well, we have about 25 minutes for the interview.
I'm a little sweaty because I ride my bike here sometimes when I can, to save planet.
And you see, there's water next to you, too, if you...
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you so much. It's been a tremendous, busy day, so remembering to do things like drink water is good.
Yes, definitely. So we have seven questions, and I believe you received them. And we will ask them to you, and we take turns asking. And we'll let you know if we're close to time and we're not.
Yeah, I just have to stop. Yeah?
Thomas, if you pour that again, put your hand on the top.
Oh, thank you.
You had us up here like...
That's not the kind of shopping I want to do.
We'd remember it.
All right, don't count that against us.
I didn't start yet.
The first question, Thomas, is, one of the most important things you think the board could work on to improve students' experience and outcomes, whether in academics or in social and emotional lives? And how would you measure success?
Thanks for having me. I'm gonna go a little long on this question, but shorter on some other ones. And I really want to dedicate this whole experience to my father, William Glenn Berger, who died of COVID-19 last August. And he supported every leadership effort I made while he was around. He was only 69 years old. Well, the important issues of our district are all highly connected to one another. So anytime in education and you're asked to elevate specific priorities, it always has a reverberating effect on other issues that intersect with it. The first thing that's always going to come to mind for me is student health and wellness. If you have kids that are unwell, you're going to have behavioral challenges and attendance challenges, which leads to teacher demoralization, which leads to staffing issues and frustration that can lead to resentment and blame, which can be misplaced or misappropriated, leading to less cohesion and more polarization, which can lead to an us-versus-them mentality that everyone in the community experiences as isolating, which comes all the way around to worsening the original problem of student health and wellness again. A vicious cycle. I believe the district can continue to support wellness through things like social and emotional learning. You've heard plenty about that tonight. And there was a really heartening example just earlier tonight aimed at improving wellness in collaboration with parents. At the Sheldon High School Auditorium at 6 o'clock PM, they brought in Dr. Tiffany Brown, a licensed family therapist from UO who helped parents know what steps to take if their child is self-harming, cutting, engaging in suicidal or non-suicidal self-injury. We all know the district alone cannot solve crises of this nature. But this was also an example of an event in collaboration with Wayne County Public Health or Health Authority and Lines for Life Suicide Rapid Response Program. I think we're best equipped to expand on these effective partnerships when we're working well together. And I'll be a board member who can promote consensus around the issues that most affect our children. But there are other contributing factors to mental health. And if I may, I'll attempt to connect that to literacy and academic empowerment. If a student has a bit more control over their academic interests, like I experienced firsthand while North Eugene had the Small Schools Program, while they had that program, then they might feel better about showing up to the same place every day with the same people. If reading and writing exercises give students more agency to explore historical figures or issues that are relevant to them, those are the kind of things that get the serotonin flowing. And those are the lessons they'll remember when they're older and putting their own kids through school. Mental health is so attached to mental crisis. And I think we need to decouple those notions so we can do... whole campus, but particularly students of color. So I did two things. I fought for more equitable mental health supports, not just after crises, but proactively to meet a greater amount of the need and do the important work of making sure students of color feel welcome in those clinical environments. For too long, they haven't had access to therapists who know what they're experiencing. And we know that, for example... And we know that, for example, black women are much more likely to have their pain being minimized, ignored, misdiagnosed, or not diagnosed at all in the clinical setting. The second thing I did in my role as a senator was noticing that students were self-medicating and leaning on substances, sometimes requiring medical attention on weekends, but they're afraid to call for it when they've been using controlled substances or to call for their friends who are in need. I actually co-led the initiative with a non-senator student who otherwise really did not get along with me. Uh, and helped bring them to the table when we got a medical amnesty policy passed and codified, where it remains today in the school's policy, potentially saving vulnerable lives from overdose. So it's overall wellness and literacy. And you asked how success is measured. Assessment is important and when we think of how to assess our learners, the conversation does not have to instantly jump to state tests or high stakes multiple choice. Here's an experience I'll always remember from four J. I was pulled out of my homeroom in middle school to an isolated area alone with one person who had a stopwatch and a piece of paper with a paragraph on it. This is absolutely true. I don't think I ever got through the second sentence when this happened. I was back in the classroom almost immediately because the stopwatch led me to think it was a test of speed. So I'd read the sentence, you know, Joseph and Haley went to watch a movie, but the B C L was at Kevin's house. They didn't say stop. I would go back into the room and my job would be to fetch the next person and people would say, you're back already. While the next person would usually not be back as quickly and it was glaringly obvious what was happening. Nothing happened to help me read and comprehend other there. I was just going for speed. And other people would feel dejected because learning to read should be empowering and that stopwatch test was demoralizing. So assessing students' ability to critically think, their social, emotional development, and yes, their ability to get important facts right too. This is the most anxious generation in recorded history as far as I know, and we might reduce some of that anxiety, say, at the end of a Margaret Atwood unit by saying, you can demonstrate you understood this book through a poem or a sculpture or a mock news video or an original song. And going back to that stopwatch test that didn't seem to help me, we need to fight for resources that allow uh, for attentiveness to students who are doing well on assignments and could be struggling in a whole host of other ways. We need to graduate kids who can read and write because they feel empowered by the written word. And we know that there are correlations between things like violence and limited vocabulary as well as dyslexia and incarceration. And we know that prison populations in certain areas are predicted by test scores, starting as early as elementary school. I would not be here today, uh, applying for this if it weren't for a confluence of factors and scholarships and support systems. It kept me going despite challenges and I'm committed to fighting for the next generation to be better supported than I was.
I'm next. Part of the board's role is connecting with the community. What does community engagement look like to you and what do you see as being the board's role? What specific ways would you work with the board to engage community state workers?
This is such an important question because it doesn't even feel like an elephant in the room anymore that we have to grow in this area. The elephant's kind of commanded enough attention that we are talking about it and that's at least a place to start. I'll talk about the collective, but starting as an individual board member, I would lead by example by visiting schools constantly. I think we all know that the thousands of hours Maya spent in schools are an incredible asset to the board and those face-to-face and occasionally face-to-zoom connections are irreplaceable. I've been there already because after being named a finalist, I reached out to every single principal in all of our schools, including the leaders of V C C O, Eugene Online Academy, Eugene I F S, et cetera. I want to know how their experience of the board has been and what, what they would appreciate. I don't expect a lot of emails back, but they're busy with their own school communities and that's okay. I suspect that if I'm appointed, it will be good to have that head start. There really aren't shortcuts to engagement, but I can hit the ground running because of a certain privilege I was given when I was a four J student. Uh, I mentioned last time that my doctoral studies will be funded by a very comprehensive scholarship for students of color, which is through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. I earned it in twenty twelve. Because they cover a significant portion of living costs, even up through graduate degrees in education. Uh, and I don't yet have a family to raise and I work and study online, making my own schedule. I have a lot of time to truly devote to this position. I think in an applicant pool this strong, if I were you, I'd pick two really safe choices. And although initial impressions of me, they vary because I'm not always been as mature as I have become since losing my father. I believe I'm one of the safest choices of all. You know what I do in the context of this district. I've excelled, but for the collective good. And the fact that I've done so throughout my dad's incarceration or unexpectedly having no safe home after revealing my gender identity or working through my own neurodiversities that never got diagnosed in four J due to a combination of my academic success and a stigma in Japanese culture for mental health. That sounds on paper like someone who you could probably bet on to do the work of engagement without getting too derailed. I get knocked down, I fall down, sure, but I always get up and learn from it. And I'm a naturally conversational, approachable person who likes to find someone who looks lonely and see if I can find a mutual interest of ours to geek out over together. When I was a student at four J, the only memories I have of the board are either from the meetings where I would come here and feel critically intimidated or when board members would sit on the stage at graduation. I know a lot of work was done in those years and I don't regret the fact that I didn't see it up close because we were always focused on trying to succeed the students. But as a board member, I would seek out public speaking opportunities because I obviously like them. And I would go to assemblies and try to get the crowd fired up about board initiatives and engagement opportunities. I might even rap and play the guitar if it's appropriate to do so. In my free time already, I've produced a video for Kelly Little School parent. I have from a graduate's perspective, multiple videos for my K days at four J assemblies. I made D B's at band concerts, a small schools tribute video after I graduated. I've shot well over three thousand photos at four J events. And I've gone back to visit classrooms on Zoom several times in the last uh, year or two. I think my incentive to work hard at this would not shrink, but grow by orders of magnitude once I have that vote to cast in these underserved communities to help represent. The question is about engagement and I've yet to mention my podcast where I just hosted a live congressional debate yesterday where we asked questions to the candidates on disability, the arts, and education, things that other forums weren't asking. Because an informed public is the better option in democracy. And if you saw my email today, you know that over ninety people in the community, uh, representing every stakeholder group in the district, as far as I can tell, signed on to a letter supporting my candidacy. A letter that was hastily created by the South Eugene Spanish teacher who has seen my trajectory from incoming homeroom sixth grader to successful professional and community leader. It's not my momentum though, it's our momentum and the board is moving in the right direction. And I'm going to put in a long, long unpaid hours to get us to where we leave with engagement because there's nothing of greater importance in my life. And that's saying something because I do find a lot.
Thank you. Our third question, I feel like we're talking to each other, but apparently I'm like a voice up on the ceiling or something. Here's our third question. People in groups may try to lobby board members to take up issues that are outside the board's role or authority. How would you handle such requests?
Yeah, you know, I have a lot of experience in student affairs and often that work means saying, I hear you, but while I'm not the best equipped person or most appropriate individual to take up this issue, maybe I can redirect you for a different audience or some other way to make your voice heard. It's not necessarily about giving people to run around, but establishing boundaries and knowing that I represent the public. That's the whole public and not any disproportionate entity that might have the resources and time to try to lobby me. When it comes to grassroots lobbying and advocating, I'm no stranger to getting things done on both sides of that effort. I've served as a legislative intern for Planned Parenthood Advocates of Oregon, organizing folks from around the state to descend on Salem to support reproductive justice laws in both the House and Senate. I played just a small role uh, in ensuring that Oregon still has no restrictions to accessing the rights guaranteed by Roe v. Wade. And in many instances, we were the only state to claim that status. I was also a legislative intern in the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, fighting for climate policy on the coast and throughout our metro area. I'll be the first to tell you that American politics is full of brokenness, especially for the working class, the poor, and the marginalized. But like many of you, I'm an independent thinker. I do the work to find all sides of an issue. I consider what the motives are of anyone trying to change my opinion or trying to reinforce my current position. I'm not beholden to anyone and if I ever run for a, if I ever run for a school board seat, I'll be extremely mindful and transparent about contributions. And I want to take a moment to say that even though I received three votes in a few voting rounds, I'm not in lockstep with anyone. I'm sure I uh, would vote differently from the people who would vote to appoint me on given issues, should I get that chance. And even though I've yet to earn your votes, directors Paz and Newman, I just view that as a sign that I haven't proven myself to you yet. And if I do, I'm sure we'll work together on plenty of important issues and you might even benefit from someone who occupies the multifarious spaces that I do, being a partner with you on the board. I never thought of the school board as something political when I was a student. And while there's a national movement right now to politicize school boards or politicize the teaching of truthful history and culturally responsive pedagogy, this is about our kids and our kids deserve much, much better than the worst of a political climate they did not choose to grow up in.
Thank you.
You ready? What role do you think uh, staff members' voices should play in four J policies and practices?
So there's teaching staff, admins, classified staff, four J central staff, and the board that volunteers their time. And everybody should have enough dignity to feel that their voice matters a lot. While none of these groups should wield so much power that their influence outweighs or marginalizes another. I would fight for a living wage, certainly within our district, but also for working class people all around the state because if people don't feel the job market can sustain them outside of their current job, they're not going to speak freely about how to improve their surroundings for fear of being labeled a troublemaker, prevented from advancement, or even being fired. We have to have relationships with, with staff that are built on trust. We have to know the names and faces of who is, who is where, doing what, what they uh, and what they want in the most ideal version of their position and what are the baseline needs that they absolutely must have that cannot get overlooked. Great organizations are based on trust and leadership at every level. So I've talked about how I would visit schools often and talk to staff on the ground, but that's still going to give singular opinions um, instead of aggregate, aggregate or collective trends uh, that they're experiencing and would like to speak up about. It's imperative for a touch of leaders who are trusted within their own school communities and departments. And as a board member, I look into surveying and what's working well and what can be improved in how we solicit feedback. I remember how cool it was to be a four J staff member for three years. My four J dot name dot E D U email address was listed right on the North Eugene website next to the biology teacher, Ms. Hewitt. And I even had a key card to enter the building during the summer for events where I was the A B technician. But I'm no occasion whatsoever was I ever asked for my feedback on what I needed from the district to improve my job. And so I would certainly work to recognize that student staff are staff too.
Question number five. Twenty percent of our students live below the federal poverty line. Describe your understanding of what that means and your experience living or working with under-resourced and understerved communities. Share your thoughts on how the board can work to better serve these students and families.
Even though my dad was a small business owner for some time, he was not profitable. He was homeless for ten years and the best housing I could get him was my Toyota Prius, which I provided to him. My mom has only ever had one profession in her life aside from one-off translation gigs and that's restaurant server and sometimes manager who's still paid like she's not a manager, still not given breaks at her job even though she runs the restaurant. We lacked health insurance and dental care for a very, very long time, which meant my mom was deathly afraid that I might one day take my helmet off while riding my bike or that I might eat food that was not safe to eat anymore and I'd get sick. My dad's teeth were all gone when he was in his early fifties, which was very socially stigmatizing. So I've seen poverty, I've lived in poverty, I was on a booze lunch and then free lunch in my time at all three of the four J schools I attended. I grew up not knowing if I would attend college because my father was not mentally well and stable and my mother never went to college. Uh, we can boost career and technical ed however in this, in the school. And I think there's a lot in this district and there's a ridiculously unhealthy amount of anxiety and worry experienced by students and their parents because of the cost of four-year college. We need to get successful graduates of trade programs, of L C C programs and put them right in the center of the spotlight to show students that ambition or success doesn't automatically mean the most years spent paying for school. If we can boost career and technical ed programs, like I know the district has work to do, we need to be, we need to be sure our students have labor rights too. Because wage theft, denied overtime, and a lack of enforcement of rights is a serious daily issue in America and Oregon. I have a book here that talks about it. When it comes to unions, I shared a story in my application that I somewhat regret, so let me tell you about it real quick. Um, there was a pro-union walkout, uh, I didn't write this down. And I basically talked to my application about how I supported the walkout by letting them use four J speakers without approval and we made good trouble. Um, and I, I want to say that it was actually a teacher who encouraged me to do that because he knew I was going to participate in the walkout. And he said, well, yeah, I stayed in school at the high grade of walkout and he said, what are you doing here? Where are you going to go? And so I, that's why I went. I don't want you to think that I'm like the biggest troublemaker in the world. Um, after I was named a finalist uh, for this, I purchased a copy of this book and it's the One Percent Solution by our own Gordon Lifer. On page one oh one, he references uh, the anti-union actions of former Wisconsin chairman, Mr. Scott Walker. Um, and that's exactly who was doing the stuff that we were protesting against uh, when we did that walkout. Um, I'm pro-union in the same way I'm pro-soup. I generally love soup. And while I proudly fly a flag for my love of borscht, miso soup, pho, and clam chowder, I have some qualms with split pea. I never let teachers union, nor have I been part of one. I know there, uh, I know unions all play very different roles sometimes and I do not believe any organization should have dominance over the district. I simply believe no one's voice should be shut out. And back to the question about poverty, as you know from my application, one of my most proud accomplishments was a college guidance coordinator, where in this role, I mentored a case load of fifty rising high school seniors from around the country, all of whom came, came from below the poverty line and forty-nine of which were students of color. After one-on-one mentoring with me, for the first time in the program's history, all fifty scholars were admitted to one of Barron's most competitive colleges and universities. Pretty much Ivy League Stanford and MIT. I swell with pride when I say, when I see what they're accomplishing now because it dwarfs my own successes. Thanks.
Okay, number six. In what ways has the board worked to expand its and the district's collective focus on eliminating inequities? And how do you see this impacting the district and what would you bring to this work?
Okay, so you have about nineteen and a half minutes. I don't know if I could talk about this for a long time. From what the district has done, I think there's been boost toward free lunch. I think there's been more acknowledgement of bathroom uh, needs and rights as well as pronouns for non-binary students and students in general. Um, we've seen uh, multilingual resources, especially on the web and forums. Um, I think the, the board took the Black Lives Matter movement very seriously uh, for the most part. Um, and I also really appreciated when feminine hygiene products were made free in schools. That made a real big difference first for people who menstruate uh, and for the schools in general. Um, when it comes to equity, it's my life's work. I think one of the biggest lessons I've learned on it is how to get people to talk about it without necessarily knowing that they're talking about it. How to open up dialogue with people who may have never discussed colorism or tone policing or Tulsa Race Massacre or Fred Kortenakzoo versus the United States. Maybe uh, there's so many ways to fight for equity, so many skillsets out there and I'm going to do that work whether you appoint me or not. I also don't think I'm special. I don't deserve any disproportionate credit for anything. I've contributed to white supremacy myself. It's my duty to undo it and my unique mixed race, race identity has allowed me to talk to other white people and talk to other Asians without their guard up. The flip side of that is that many white folks over the years have accidentally shown me their hand. They didn't know that I was a part of a racial group that they were making a COVID joke about or they wanted to say something like, I just don't get why Asians are so quiet and standoffish and rude when I try to be friendly to them. Someone questioned why I still associate and love people who make these and errors. And the truth of the matter is, and four J students of color know this, if I turn any ties with everyone who is committed to racial micro expression in my presence, I would only have a small subset of people of color to be friends with and that's not the reality I want for four J students. There's uh, there are opponents of racial justice initiatives who say, these radicals, they want you to all believe the exact same thing or they'll cancel you. And I ain't, I've never tried to make anyone. Be if I tried that. But there are centuries of mythology and lies and stolen histories and entire systems of organized thought and unjust institutions that we can't accept just under the justification that it would be inconvenient and unpleasant to fix them. So. I really can help do this. I really can.
All right, last question. How do you think students could engage in leadership within the district more? What would be, what would your role be as a board member in helping increase student engagement?
Thanks, Maya. Eleven years ago, I applied to a scholarship called Eugene's First, Future First Citizen. By saying that, I'm not saying I'm ideologically identical to the Chamber of Commerce, who would end up naming me as the recipient. I have my qualms, much more so than the National Chamber, but I know that Brittany Quick Warner really respects me and we have a good, albeit minimal sort of relationship. Uh, that award was quite an honor and the money helped me pay for college application fees. I had no other resources to pay with. But my point with naming this experience is that people who hold serious power in Eugene believe that I was among the next generation of Eugene's leaders. Now, a lot of issues have rapidly grown in seriousness since then, many of them disproportionately affecting my generation. We do need to increase opportunities for youth to be real leaders, not just poster children. And in instances where I've been turned away from chances to serve, I've heard a rank of folks tell me, I know you'll make the world better in the future though. I know you'll make the world better in the future though, or you really cared in what you've done up to now. But when it comes to being in the now, and of course, the only time things actually get done is in the present, it's easy to be shunted away by folks as though they never had any intention of letting someone like you participate. Not once did it matter how high you hung up the heights of your talent, nor how deeply the well of your goodwill was filled. You're just not what we're looking for. And that right there, I think it's precisely that feeling of marginalization that I think all of you have felt at some point. Gordon, as a Jewish American, you, Alicia, as an open lesbian user and mobility support, you, Judith, as a woman who's lived through decades of sexism that many around you have not, that you, Maya, as a Latina mother and volunteer, and that you, Laurel, as a black woman in government, have seen, have felt. And I think you've truly scraped and clawed here for how you believe the district can make sure no 4J student, no 4J employee has to endure that. And I, of course, recognize the very phenotypical nature of everything I've just said, the surface-level diagnosis. When so much of what goes on goes beneath the surface, that which falls deeper in the face, people really tick. And I hope I'm blessed to discover what that is, especially amongst our student leaders, if you trust me to be your peer. If we really believe that representation matters, and we're not just saying it. We know that we just lost our youngest member of the board. We just lost the board's longest-standing river road connection too. And we know, and I can fill both those roles. And we know that people who are non-binary and who look like dudes and who are Asian and who are neurodiverse or disabled, they don't have an easy time getting on this board or any of the school board, and the county is still named after the pro-slavery activist and segregationist Joseph Lane. And it feels like maybe that future where in my generation might be able to have just one seat on the board, one seat for thirteen months, where the spotlight will be on us, and if we screw up, we won't win a citywide election, and you won't have to deal with us. That future might be right now. So I want to lead uh in the example of the 4J students I've seen, and I'll let you use your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. And you, you know that we're voting on Wednesday?
Yeah.
And that, yeah, so I hope you can make it.
I'm a Wow Hall volunteer, and it's, they kind of need all hands on deck that night, but I'll be very attentive to my phone, and if I'm chosen, I'll come straight here to get sworn in. Thank you.
And you know, there'll be, we can swear people another night too, so, yeah, thank you.
I'll probably be eager, I think. I know it's a long shot, but it would be, it would be an incredible honor, and now it would work my tail off, so, thanks, Kathy.
So, I think it's nine oh seven, and I'm gonna adjourn this work session.